This is a regular session. Could we please start with the local?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
And Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on that list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or on final call, publicly invited to be heard on any item at the end of the evening. So now we have the November 9th organizational meeting minutes to approve. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of those minutes.
All right, I'll second that. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Okay, now we have a motion for the approve the November 10th regular session minutes. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of those minutes as well.
Second. All right, that's moved in second. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. And we have the November 17th of regular session meetings. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move passage of the November 17th regular session minutes.
Second. Okay, that's been moved in second. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions?
Yes. And Mayor Coombs, the public hearing notice, excuse me, the public hearing notice for item 9C, which is ordinance 2015-63, was inadvertently left out of the Times Call. And because the public hearing was announced at the last meeting, staff is suggesting that you have the public hearing tonight and then continue the item and have another public hearing on the 15th. And then we will republish that ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
So that was 9C?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a report from the city manager?
No report, Mayor Council.
Okay, so now we have special reports. So Joni Marsh from the Director of Planning and Development Services will give this presentation.
Actually, it is Rebecca Cantwell. She's the executive director of Colorado Solar Energy Industry Association.
Oh, okay, great. Good evening. I'm very excited to be here. I'm Rebecca Cantwell with the Colorado Solar Energy Industries Association and formerly with the Times Call. It was my first newspaper and I covered City Hall many years ago in Longmont. Learned a lot, so I'm always happy to be back. Solar-friendly communities is a true partnership between cities and counties, the solar industry and nonprofits. It's all designed to make it faster, easier, and more affordable for citizens and businesses to go solar. And it's part of a pretty big deal. It's called the Sun Shot Initiative. Some of you may remember the Moon Shot. This is almost as ambitious if you think about it. The goal of Sun Shot is to bring the cost of solar energy to be competitive with all other forms of energy by the year 2020 without subsidies. And that's an important goal for national security, economic development, and environmental reasons. And as we see the world leaders gathered in Paris talking a lot about the very important role of clean energy in reducing the threat of climate change. So recent studies have shown that actually half the cost of a typical rooftop system come from elements other than the hardware, other than the, you know, the panels and the, and the other gear. The basic soft costs include all kinds of things like marketing and customer acquisition, but they also include the whole permitting process. So in Colorado, we have over 200 cities and they all have their own rules. So it makes it kind of hard for the solar installers if they have to follow a whole different set of rules every time they go to a different city. So that's the point of the program is really to give certification and recognition to communities that are leaders in adopting best practices in permitting, inspection, planning, and public education, and then trying to sort of streamline the whole process. So we award points towards certification based on 12 best practices. So I've been working for quite a while with Mike Fraley, who's been wonderful to work with. And Longmont, I'm happy to tell you, has earned enough points to be certified as a solar-friendly community. The cities worked hard to implement solar-friendly policies such as providing a standardized permit form so that, you know, installers who go from here to other communities in Boulder County and beyond can use the same form. Also allowing permits to be submitted electronically, which is a really big step that some of the biggest cities have not yet taken. And also providing a map that shows everyone where the solar is in Longmont. So we really believe in giving cities a pat on the back, and that's what we're here to do tonight, for enacting these policies. But there's also a more tangible reward. Our solar company members are partners in the project and they offer a tangible benefit. So we have about 16 solar companies that offer a $500 discount to, to customers in solar-friendly communities. And that's to sort of directly give a benefit for the reduced costs they face in doing business in a place like Longmont. So that should really be a direct benefit to your citizens. So tonight, Longmont becomes the 18th Colorado community to be certified. Together, they represent a population approaching 3 million people, so well more than half the state's population. We hope really this is just the beginning of our partnership. We hope Longmont will continue working with us on developing more solar-friendly policies. We hope we can be helpful to the city as it moves forward in its solar development. We also hope this award will really benefit your city in both economic and environmental ways. So we've brought some goodies tonight. First, I have a plaque that I'd like to give to you, Mayor Coombs. And then we have a very, a very roadworthy road sign, and we'd really like to get a picture of the whole council with the road sign if we could. So we, uh...
And the staff involved, if you will also go up, please.
Come on, guys.
Please, please.
So Mayor Coombs, here's your, here's your plaque. And hopefully you can find a nice place to put that. And then, yeah, well, or...
We'll get everybody, council, around them, and then staff on the...
I'm telling you, every picture.
Do one more.
Okay, now, I'm gonna pull the sign. So this is your, is your road sign. We hope you'll find a nice place to put it. And, uh...
A couple of us, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Gabe, maybe you can, maybe not.
I'll go after you.
Okay.
Let him go.
Okay, everybody look here, please. Everybody ready? Here we go. Let me do one more. Thank you.
And then for Facebook, one, two, three, look at me. Here we go.
All right, and one more of you guys on mine. Take a couple here. All right, big smiles, solar. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Put it in front of the name here, so...
You thought we should make it...
Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you so much.
This council meeting, we got this presentation from Platte River on how we're adding 30 megawatts of solar to Platte River Power. Now we've got this award, so things are happening. All right. So now it's time for first call, publicly invited to be heard. First up is James Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's me again. I'm back again. We still have not found a house. They sold our house that we were living in. We've lived there 26 years. But the new landlord that bought it three years ago decided he just couldn't afford to rebuild it like he wanted to. So he sold it. And we were supposed to be out today. Well, that didn't happen. We had one lead. A guy called me and said that the bottom half of a house was for rent, and, but it had all stairs. It was a basement. And I can't do stairs. So we're still looking for something. And I know there's something out there somewhere, but it's just the way it is. I've lived here for 65 years. I volunteered for about everything in I can think of. I was a chaplain at the hospital for over 30 years, chaplain with the police department, and on the housing authority, and all those, senior citizens' advisory board. But I still have not been able to find anything. All they want to put us in a senior one-bedroom apartment, but I have great-grandkids that stays with me and we take care of them a lot. So I don't want to give up my family just so I can find a one-bedroom house to go to. I'm not ready to get in my rocking chair because I'm not getting old, just getting older. But thank you so much for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Georgiana Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was trying to help him down because he's been to dialysis today, and he's still doing good. And, and, anyway, I'm wondering what's going on, too. We, he was on the computer and he was looking at all kinds of houses, all kinds of places, but the rent is way above us. In some way, somehow, you people are all in this wonderful job that you got voted in. Some way, somehow, there's got to be help for, in this city, to help us. So we came back again because we're working on it. It's not like we're not doing nothing. So I'm hoping that some way, somehow, we've, of course, covered a lot of ground in different places, but there's got to be something. And you go out different places and, and also you kind of are over people to kind of set the rules on different things, so there's got to be something. And I was, I took him to therapy the other day, and I was going back to pick him up, and a lady fell. I stopped my car. I got out. She fell across the sidewalk, and she threw her groceries, and I helped her real fast, like, and her hand was all bloody. She ended up being 78 years old. She told me she didn't drive a car. I didn't know the lady. I got her in my car, and I took her to her house, and then her hand was bleeding. And I said, well, I'll take you to the next care. She said, I'll walk. I said, no, I'll take you, leave you, then I'll go back and get my husband, then I'll come back and take you. Because she said she didn't really have any family. So I'm just telling you what kind of people we are, too. I know you're wonderful people in this city, and I know with the funds and different things, there's got to be help for us. So we come back again because, you know, what else can we do? But pray, and we're looking, and something's got to come, come. Thank you very much for listening to us. Lord bless you.
Okay, that ends first call, publicly invited to be heard.
Mayor Coombs, your first item is...
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Is it forceful open, or?
No, you, you have to actually be signed up. I'm sorry.
It's gonna be a quick meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it won't be too long until we have...
That's one way to jinx us.
Yes.
Mayor Coombs, your first item on second reading is ordinance 2015-61, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the vacation of 30-foot and 50-foot sanitary sewer easements, a 20-foot utility easement, and 50-foot right-of-way on Allen Street and Sumy Avenue in the Allen subdivision generally located at the southwest corner of 9th Avenue and Hoover Street. And there is no formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, if there isn't any questions from council, I'm going to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2015-61. Is there anybody in the public you'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. So is there any further discussion? Councilmember Peck.
Yes, I do have a question, actually. It says on here that this is a 10-lot unit. But then when I read through the background and issue analysis, it says that it's an 81-lot residential subdivision. But when I was looking at the plans of the subdivision, I couldn't figure out where those other 71 lots were coming from.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Eva Pajewski, Planning and Development Services. So we're looking at two different things at this property at 9th and Hoover. In the 50s, there was a subdivision that was approved in Boulder County before it was annexed, and that's the eight-lot subdivision you're referencing?
Yes.
Okay. So that was subdivided, platted, and recorded with the county clerk, and it was never built. And this property has, as you can see from the corner of 9th and Hoover, has always been undeveloped land, just sitting there. It was annexed several years ago, and then we received a new development application. That's the 81-unit project. That's gone through planning and zoning commission as a planned unit development subdivision plan and development plan, and it was approved. However, when you have a platted and recorded easement or right-of-way on a piece of land, it has to be vacated by the municipality before you can replat this new subdivision that's going to be built.
Okay.
So this is more of a housekeeping item. So cleaning up this platted right-of-way and utility easements from the 50s, clearing off all encumbrances on the land so then we can do a clean subdivision plan.
Replat it for 81, 7, 81 units instead of the 10.
Correct.
Okay, one other question. I'm sorry, I don't understand this completely. But it says here, let me read it. A new design for the subdivision that includes other adjacent property as well. What other adjacent property are you referring to?
Sorry, Councilmember Peck, can you reference which part of the staff report you're looking at?
Actually, I'm just looking at the city council communication, the background and issue analysis, where it is saying that the, the current owner of the property has been working with the city on a new design for the subdivision that includes other adjacent property as well.
So this is, this is somewhat complicated. But this subdivision that we are releasing the right-of-way for from the 50s, this was a small piece of land in the corner of 9th and Hoover.
Okay.
That didn't include all the other lots around it and that have been subdivided and platted through the years. And so this 81-lot project includes other parcels south of this and west of it that were not part of this subdivision from the 50s that we're discussing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If no one else got any questions, I move ordinance 2015-61.
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded. Let's vote. Yes. Someone hasn't voted. Okay, that's passed seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2015-62. A bill for an ordinance amending section 14.04.09.5 of the Longmont Municipal Code on water bill rebates. And again, there is not a formal staff presentation, but they are in the audience to address questions.
Okay, if there are any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on ordinance 2015-62. Is there any from the public who'd like to speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move ordinance 2015-62.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2015-63. A bill for an ordinance amending chapter 14.42 of the Longmont Municipal Code on art in public places. And this is the one that we need to have you carry over after you have a public hearing.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 2015-63. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like, wish to speak on this item this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on this. So then you'll carry this to the next meeting then?
I just need a motion to continue the.
Okay. I move that we continue the ordinance 2015-63. Okay, let's vote to continue this. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is the Consent Agenda. First item, 9A, is ordinance 2015-64. A bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015. Public hearing and second reading for this is scheduled for December 15th. Item 9B is ordinance 2015-65. A bill for an ordinance approving, the administrative ordinance approving the Town of Lyons contract to buy and sell real estate for the conveyance of the city's North and South Water Treatment Plant properties to the Town of Lyons. Public hearing and second reading for this is scheduled for December 15th. Item 9C is ordinance 2015-66. A bill for an ordinance establishing a charge of 75 cents per month for emergency telephone services, 911, for wired, wireless, and, and voice-over-internet protocol subscribers in Longmont for the calendar year 2016. Public hearing and second reading for this is scheduled for December 15th. Item 9D is resolution 2015-101. Finding that the petition for annexation of a parcel of land located in Boulder County, State of Colorado, known as the Boes Annexation, generally located at 8775 Greg Road, substantially complies with the Colorado Revised Statute, Section 31121071. Item 9E is resolution 2015-102. Approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment and reimbursement agreement between the City of Longmont, the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, and PFP Longmont Holdings 1, LLC for the South Main Street, Main Station and adjoining properties project. Item 9F is accept funding from the Longmont Community Foundation in the amount of $12,884.12 to support early childhood efforts, efforts, excuse me, in the Longmont Expansion Cohort. Item 9G is approved 2016 legislative policies, including National League of Cities legislative policies, Colorado Municipal League policy statement, and Longmont Water Principles. Now, item 9H is approved amendment 15-01 to the 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Action Plan. And staff would like to pull item 9B for a short presentation.
Councilmember Moore.
Well, if nobody objects, I'll, I'd like to move the Consent Agenda minus item B.
All right, let's vote on the Consent Agenda, minus 9B. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Dale Radamaker will make his presentation.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, Dale Radamaker, General Manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. So item 9B on your agenda tonight, I just wanted to update you on a couple of things. First of all, just real quickly, what this amendment is doing is a couple of things. One is it is extending the time for Longmont and Lyons to come to agreement from December 31 of 2015 out to December 31 of 2016. So we're extending it a year. The reason for that extension is some of the uncertainty regarding exactly when the funding from the CDBG, ADR funds will be received and coming in. So that's one change. The other change we're doing is we're broadening. We're not restricting it just to round three funding. So whether it's round one, round two, or round three, we're opening that up so it can be more flex, flexible in that way. And then the other thing that we're doing is we're, this ordinance amendment will also authorize the city manager to be able to administrate, administratively extend the contract if needed in order to secure the funding for it. One of the things that's taken a little longer time as well is the HUD environmental review is far more extensive than, than what we had been through at this point. And that's probably a good thing. It's a good thing to know the condition of the property before we sell it to Lyons. I do also want to let you know the Town of Lyons took it to their town board for consideration at their meeting last night. And they approved both the, the base contract as well as the amendment without any changes. So just wanted to let you know that. And if you have any questions, I can take those. Otherwise, I'll get out of here.
Councilmember Peck.
I have a question, just out of ignorance. So the land is about 10 acres up there. Is that correct?
Councilmember Peck, it is. It's about a little over six acres on the north side and a little, a little around three and a half or so acres on the south. It's in two different parcels on both sides of Highway 66.
So is Lyons wanting to buy both parcels?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2015-67. 65, excuse me.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is a discussion of your 2016 calendar of meetings. And I'm going to move to the podium for this discussion.
Okay.
Just, just cancel everything.
Mayor and council members, I'm Valerie Skitt, the city clerk. And we put into your packet calendars, a list of all your meeting, regular meeting dates and study session dates, if you don't change anything for next year. And then a calendar for each month that shows holidays. It shows school vacations, conferences that you may want to attend. And so we'd like to take this time at the end of the year to pre-plan meetings for next year so that staff can also pre-plan when things are coming to council. We've found that to be very helpful over the last couple of years. So I just need to have you go month by month and let us know if there's any changes you want to make to the schedule.
Okay, let's, let's start with January.
And you will note on January 19th, we did, did put open forum with question marks because that's generally around the time that you've had that in the past. Don't know whether you want to continue that. We've done it for a number of years. It's certainly up to you guys. We, we put it on the 19th. That's a study session.
Okay.
So we'll plan that.
What do you think, Bonnie?
Yeah, I would say that we should continue the open forum. It's a fun time of year.
Joe needs to experience open forums on this side.
And we do have a tentative pre-session scheduled with the Longmont Housing Authority that night. We have not confirmed the date finally with them. We needed to wait until we saw what the calendar looked like, for sure. Okay, so no other changes to January at this point? Okay. About February? Okay.
I don't have any, anybody's got any changes?
I just have a question.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I didn't see when we would potentially have our retreat.
Councilmember Santos, you know, at this point, we have not even really brought forth any dates. It would be great if, if you all took a look at this calendar as we went and said, these are a couple of times that we would like. We used to do a two-day retreat, Friday and Saturday. I think you all have kind of scaled that back to just a Friday or, you know, kind of depending on the topics. We don't have particular suggestions yet at this time for the retreat topics. Unless you are interested in doing some more work within Vision Longmont, but I haven't even talked with Joni about that. If you wanted to bookmark some times and dates, though, as part of this process, that would be wonderful.
I'll keep moving forward. You can always come back to that too if you want to. For March, you will notice that the NLC Congressional City Conference is listed there. And that is over a regular session, generally three or four of you attend that conference. So you might want to make a change on this date.
Yeah. Okay, so we have to put the regular session on the first because we have to have two regular sessions unless we wanted to have two of them back-to-back.
Totally up to how you want to do that.
Just do a regular session on the 15th, study on the 22nd, and then regular on the 29th.
Okay. So we go study session, then we've got the NLC meeting, then we go regular session on the 15th, study session on the 22nd, and regular session on the 29th. Are you happy with that?
And council, we will bring these all back on the 15th for you to take final action on. But that works as well. So for April? There is a St. Rain Valley School District spring break. Some of you have children that are in, still in school, so.
I don't have kids that are in school, but if someone else wants to, that's fine.
The mayor hates children. The mayor hates kids. Can we take off the?
Take it off, okay. And it's a study session, so we don't need to replace that if you.
Okay, we'll just take it off.
All right. Then in May, you can have three study sessions.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is there a possibility that potentially in this month that we won't have a study session unless there's some sort of? I'm looking at Harold. Because in the past, what has occurred is that if there wasn't a topic or, or things for council to discuss, if it's a study session, it normally gets counseled.
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Santos. And the city manager can counsel a study session. It doesn't take counsel action to counsel a study session.
I'm just making, if, if we leave it the way it is, there, there could be a potential that we won't have one of these study sessions in there somewhere. Unless Harold's got a lot of work for us to do.
Well, I think, I think it's kind of hard to say now as, as we look out through March. If council is inclined to cancel one of those, it would be good for us to know. That way we can just plan through it. Otherwise, we're going to probably plan to fill it.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Since we're using the mics now. I think five, I think there's five weeks of meetings in a month. We've got five Tuesdays. I think that we should stick with four for all kinds of reasons. And here, we've got a fifth Tuesday on the 31st. It's the day after Memorial Day, which is a three-day weekend. I say that we cancel the 31st.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't think about that. Yeah, let's cancel the 31st.
I'll, I'll lead this charge.
On the month of June, you have a CML conference on the third week. It is on the study session week.
Where's that held at this year?
Believe it's in Vail? Vail this year.
Ooh. Does that mean there's going to be a new 5K running course? Councilmember Moore. Yeah. NLC has their summer meeting from the 27th through 29th. So if, I don't know if anybody else is going, but I won't be here that week.
Oh, what?
June.
Jim? It's the same week as CML.
It's the week after CML.
Is it the week after? I answered 27.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
That's what council just talked about.
I only brought that up because I'm, I know I won't be here, but I don't know if other councilmembers.
If I'm reappointed, I won't be either.
We can work with five.
Yeah, we just have a light agenda.
You guys are not going to be here at CML, right?
Yeah.
There's going to be, so two weeks potentially. So let's cancel the 21st and Skeleton Crewed on the 28th. And don't put anything important on the agenda.
Okay.
It's technically means there's nothing important on the agenda. You don't have a meeting. We got to show up for two regular meetings, so.
You can make the 7th and the 14th the regular sessions.
Okay, we could do that. We're going to do the 7th and 14th regular sessions and then cancel both the 21st and the 20?
That's tough.
Yeah, okay, it's hard on there.
That's tough because if there's things on first reading, they need at least a two-week.
Period.
Two-week period.
All right, let's.
The 21st and just play the 28th by ear.
Yeah, let's do that.
In July? There's really nothing that interferes with Tuesdays.
Since July 4th is 4th of July, and some people might want to take. Should we cancel the 5th? Yeah, let's get rid of July 5th.
August, you again have. Three meetings.
Sounds good.
Three study sessions.
Okay. I guess I'm, is everyone else okay with getting rid of the 30th? Yep, okay, get rid of the 30th.
I mustn't need it.
September? Now, September, it's a little difficult to be canceling some of those meetings because of budget.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I think we better keep them all.
Yeah, I don't know about the 20th, though.
What's the 20th?
We need to back up to August.
Uh-oh. There we go.
Let's go back.
So we need, here comes the charter. So if, if, if council wanted to cancel one, it, I would advise that we do it on the 2nd because we need the 30th. Because the charter language, we have to provide you with the budget on the 30th.
Okay.
Before the 1st, so by the 1st.
Okay.
The 2nd instead of the 30th, okay.
Probably, when school's still out anyway, that's better. Good job, Jim.
Nice catch.
So we will then leave September as it is for budget purposes. October, we did, this is when, the season of the Jewish holidays. And I know that what used to be really important to Councilmember Levison. So we put them on the calendar again just in case there was someone else that needed some time off. Okay, we'll leave October.
Yep, we'll leave October.
November, we have a lot of three-study session months this, this year coming up.
NLC.
NLC.
What a, it's not election year here, right?
Right. Yeah, so we'll just drop the 15th.
Votes won't be counted until the next day anyway, so.
Okay.
All right, and then December. Excuse me?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This conversation warrants a microphone. So my question is, so we're going to, what is more, so are we all, are y'all, who's going to NLC the week of the 15th? So there's at least three of us going. Okay, I was going to say, because Thanksgiving is the following week. And my next question is, how many of us are leaving for Thanksgiving week? I'm not, but I was just. Okay, we're good. So we're canceling the 15th. All right, cool.
Yeah, we could change that regular session to the 29th.
You could do that.
Okay, let's, let's do that. Well, it's pretty nice during.
Two weeks without seeing you guys, I don't know if I can do that.
I cried when I thought of it.
So, so what we heard was change the regular session to the 29th. And cancel the 22nd with the study session.
Yeah.
15th and the 22nd.
And then moving the.
The 29th is the regular session.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay. Then December, you typically do some changing around because of Christmas week.
Okay.
That is ugly.
That's a regular session.
You have had back-to-back regular sessions in December. Or you, you could change, well.
Can we move Christmas from Sunday to Saturday?
Can we move Christmas to Tuesday?
Unless there's some.
I've got church on Sunday. That has nothing to do with Christmas.
I don't know. I think a lot of people like to have that whole Christmas week off because you got Christmas on Sunday and then you got, you know, New Year's that following Sunday. So if anybody wanted to do anything with their kids or whatnot. I think we should cancel the regular session, which means we have to move the regular session. cancel the regular session, which means we have to move the regular session to the 20th. So, I would propose that we have regular session on the 13th and the 20th and cancel the 27th.
That's why you're the mayor.
Okay.
Would you go large? Do you want that or the 6th? Back-to-backs anyway.
Well, you'll have back-to-backs either way.
The section's done a back-to-back together.
You're saying that back-to-back.
Yeah, and that far in advance, at least, we know it, a year in advance, staff can plan their items that are coming to council and, so.
Light, regular session on the 20th.
So, regular on 13th and the 20th, and a study session on the 6th. Okay. That was very easy. We will bring these back.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And then I would propose that staff would bring us back some ideas for the retreat because if there's some things we need to address that might take a two-day meeting, great, but if you're like, oh, we ain't got nothing, and it's just to welcome Councilmember Peck and get to know her, then we can go out to dinner somewhere and get it over in three hours or so.
We will bring that, we'll bring this back to you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, and with regards to that, perhaps we, before the end of this year, that we have an item on the agenda for us to potentially discuss those topics, you know, as Councilmember Levison would say, it's always great to hear what staff has, but also for us to work on our work plan. You know, hopefully, we'll have a work plan that is, and we'll stick to it for the, for the whole year. I know things do come up from time to time throughout the year, but at least to have some sort of work plan so we know where, what we're going to see in each quarter of the year.
Okay, now it's time for a final call, but we can invite it to be heard. Michael, would you like to come down and speak?
I'm Mike Schatzmaier, 12001 Twilight Street. Thank you, Mayor Coombs, honorable counsel. Hadn't planned to be here tonight. I was just next door and thought I'd drop in. I thought there was another agenda happening, but while I'm here, I wanted to address once again the issue of affordable housing. We talk about subsidies, we talk about developer set-asides for affordable, and I think there's a solution. I might reiterate, I've spoken to this once before, that a market-rate solution to affordable housing is building walkable communities. If we can look beyond the paradigm of affordable housing and look at affordable living and affordable lifestyles, as we move forward with building out the city, if we can build a city that is walkable and bikeable and allow people to live without being forced to own a car, that frees up $6,000 to $9,000 to $12,000, depending on the statistics you look at, out of the household budget that can be used for housing, that it can also be used for healthcare, it can be used for wellness and good food and jobs and education, if we can move beyond affordable housing paradigm to affordable living. Now, we have six annexations in the pipeline right now. Unfortunately, what I'm seeing is a trend towards making those monoculture, mono-use developments, big tracts of just housing. What I would ask is that we, we put some pressure on the developers to look more holistically at the place of those developments in the larger context of the city. And even if the market doesn't allow for it right now to put in commercial or retail, perhaps we could introduce a set-aside like we do with parks, maybe reduce the parks' requirement if it's appropriate, do a set-aside for some future neighborhood retailer, commercial, or office space so that people could meet their requirements of daily living by walking or biking to those areas. I would also like to suggest that as we move forward, we look at the Complete Streets Program so that these developments in the city as a whole, as we move forward with the Comprehensive Plan, which I think the city's doing a great job on, that we can look at building out these developments to include bike lane and pedestrian plane as part, or plans, as part of the intrinsic development parameters of those projects. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. All right, now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's time for Bonnie's Business of the Week, and we have a new store opening December 10th, Chuck and Dawn's Pet Food and Supplies at Village at the Peaks. If I had a pet, which I wish I had now, I would go to Dawn's Pet Food and Supplies. I understand that, that they have everything you could want for your pet. So, December 10th, go check them out.
Councilmember Peck?
I just have a story to tell. I went to the Christmas tree lighting ceremony and worked the LDDA booth, and it was quite fun, but a really nice lady came up and tapped me on the shoulder and asked me if I would take a picture with her children, and I said, sure, why not, but why? And she said, because they think you're Mrs. Claus. So, it was quite fun. These little kids were staring at me with their big eyes, and so that was quite fun.
Well, I think, I'm going to bring up the topic I've been talking with Harold about, and it's a way to potentially free up some staff time during our meetings, and, you know, here's the, the concept that if, if you all kind of agree with this, we could move the Consent Agenda basically ahead of the second reading, and then we would basically go through the Consent Agenda, and then, once we approve that, we would, the staff people that are there for that can then leave, and the stuff that's pulled, then we could have that after the second reading, and that just makes more efficient use of the staff that's here, and that's, so that's kind of the concept. So, I just thought I'd bring that, let you guys, you know, we're not, don't need to make any decisions, but I just didn't want to blindside you with what we're thinking about and see if it makes sense to you.
Does anyone have a problem with doing that?
Does anybody?
So, move.
Okay. I guess we'll move in that direction then, if that.
Mayor.
Yeah, I just needed to direct.
Yeah, we will need to bring back a, a council rule or procedure thing and change our, so we'll bring that back at a, it'll either be the 15th or the first meeting in January.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Okay, does anybody else like to speak at? All right, city manager, do you have any remarks?
No comments, mayor, council.
City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.